Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Health Experts Selecting Meeting. On this day, June 23rd. And the first thing on the agenda is President Regis.
President Regis, President Biden of the United States of America, including the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Are the mics on? Is the board on? Is the soundboard on?
I didn't turn it on. I thought it was already on. Because I didn't hear it.
Hold it. Read that out. I have Steve's laptop.
The area, yeah, now we're on. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I put an addition on the agenda before we get to it?
Sure.
I'd like to add to the agenda. I'd like to show some recognition and a thank you to two of our former planning board members, Carlos Skelty and Ashley DeSeyah. I want to thank them for their service. Carlos has been on for quite a while. He's a good addition. And a special thank you to Ashley for stepping in and pulling up a little bit of the term. And hopefully you'll see more of both of them. Congratulations to Alan Dear. He stepped up. Right now, is there anything other thing to do? Other than for you to do the reorganization, do we do that first thing? Dan, you said you should pull up on that.
Because of cars, you have the cars.
Oh, okay.
We can actually do this right now with cars.
Yeah.
And then.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
I'm on. Yeah, are any objections to any of the actual points? No, just thankful we have people volunteering. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the list?
Yep.
Gordon?
Read that.
Is Nora in likely to stay on as a member?
Um, I told you I should be lying, so I was a pointer.
I've got, um.
There's Matric. Gordon, how you doing?
I'll second.
Who moved?
I moved it.
Okay, I was gonna say if you want. Sure, I moved it.
I would move that we reappoint all those designated to the different locations. Council on Aging License of Agents, Memorial Day Committee, Municipal School Building Committee.
Parker.
And Beautification Committee, Building Inspector, Cable Advisor Committee, Cert Director, and Conservation Commission.
Second.
It's just a list, right?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yep.
All right.
So, the first thing on the agenda, actually, I should announce that we're being taped by Area 58. You can see this on your local TV. At this point, where there's a.
You're also on Zoom. We also have the Zoom going too.
Zoom as well. This is at the point where we reorganize. I would recommend that the board appoint Tom Millius as the new chair.
We will, we, okay. I'll second that for myself.
And the point. All in favor?
All right.
Appoint Gordon Andrews as the vice chair.
Second.
And what's left is the clerk.
Combine Troy for clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. How many times have you been clerk, Troy? About eight or nine?
Does that mean that you have to sign more or less now? I'm not sure.
I don't think, that was the lit up.
He's back to having to show up on Tuesday afternoon.
You had the July 14th and you wanted to discuss this. The prior notice has to be given. So that if the board wants to discuss this at the meeting on July 14th, the board should tell me that now so I can do, take the steps necessary to allow the board to make a decision if it wishes to.
I personally don't favor that. I'd like to find some venue where we could have the full hundreds.
That's for sure.
Your table, sir.
Okay. I suppose we should move on and actually, is anybody okay with, is everybody all right with the?
Tom, can you just, I'm gonna move the laptop so it's closer to you.
Okay.
Chief just said it's my fault.
Do you want me to turn off?
Hey, it's just, I think I'm just cable bound to it, so. You want to try to talk him out, no, just asking.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the next item. Approval of the agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the agenda? Is everybody good with it? Does anybody want to add anything else? Right here. You're good, Gordon?
I'm fine with it.
All right, so, um, with the addition of what I brought up earlier, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm gonna take this out of sequence now. I'm gonna move inside that agenda to, um, send a letter to both Carlos Skelty and Ashley DeSeyah, thanking them for their service and hoping that they will continue to be involved and find other things in the meantime to get involved with. We can always use informed folks that want to serve. So if either Pam can formulate a letter and we can sign it.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Selectment minutes. Regular session from May 26, 2020. Regular session, June 9, 2020. Regular session, June 16, 2020. Has everyone had an opportunity to meet, to read them? Yep.
I can't vote on the 9th. It was the day of this, yeah.
Okay, so we'll take them out of order.
I'll move June 9th.
I'll second June 9th. All those in favor? Aye.
Stand.
Do you want to move just, um, I've already moved 26th and 16th, so we had a second, yes?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. Okay, Troy, it's you.
I moved to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 112 for $700,593.10.
Second.
Are you gonna do, read them all, Troy?
Yeah. Withholding warrant number 113 for $202,445.70. Vindal warrant number 114 for $121,763.55. Ambulance commitment for $33,040.84. Ambulance commitment for 614, 6, 8 through 614, $27,981.20.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to affirm the approval of the Selectments Bill. Plymouth County Purchase of Partial A and B Eldana Road for $75,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I moved to approve of the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 115 for $245,526.44. Vindal warrant number 110 for $138,993.46. School warrant number 117 for $88,27.27.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, all right.
I moved to approve the payment of the following Selectments Bill dated June 23rd, 2020. KP Law, PC Legal April, Legal for April, $3,384. KP Law, PC Legal for May, $2,397.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Stand.
National Grid for $1,117, $716.59.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. General Mail.
Um, you have a road opening permit for a road cut at Pratt and River Streets for a monitoring well in the right-of-way. Police details needed. No other specific stipulations from the various departments. I need somebody to do some, somebody move it.
Do I hear a motion? Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, all right.
You have a recycling abatement proposed for Bill 1197 from Fiscal 23. Obviously, this is a little irregular since the board's indicated previously that it won't abate bills from previous fiscal years. Um, this is the Katzenberg, sorry, sorry. But your house, the house and the property was destroyed by fire on December 4th, 2012. The board could consider abating on a prorated basis as that was five months into the fiscal year. In essence, the owners are trying to settle all the taxes and anything else. We didn't obviously have recycling. I don't believe we charged recycling.
I think what happened, the bill came in August.
Right. Yeah, so they could have baited for Fiscal 13. What I'm saying is like for 14, 15, there was no bill because there wasn't anybody there at the house. 13, there was people at the house until December 4th. So I don't know whether the board wants to abate it at all, bait it prorated, $25 off, whatever you want to do.
I think we should have baited prorated for $25 off.
I, I have a little bit of a problem because I want to be consistent and I don't believe that we've been abating them for anybody else.
Right.
And I understand the circumstances, myself personally. As much as I'd like to abate it for somebody, I don't want to put us in a position where somebody can come back to us and say, hey, you did it for them, you didn't do it for us. I guess I would find myself in some difficulty with that.
Reasonable thought.
I mean, I'm for abating all of them. We talked about it before.
I understand.
But I'll vote with the board so we can reconsider things after the fact. So.
So I need a motion for something.
Motion to tonight.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
Uh, just an update on town meeting. Curly is postponed until July 11th. At this point, given the news from Boston, it's extremely likely that the local aid numbers will be available until the end of July. The state of emergency will have continued to that date. I'm gonna recommend that the board's selectmen hold a special meeting with the town moderator and town council sometime either this coming Friday or next week to postpone the meeting again August 8th at 9:00 a.m. Because the board right now on the regular meeting schedule, the next meeting that the board would normally have is July 14th. So that would obviously be too late to postpone the meeting. But we need Dennis to actually make that decision in consultation with you all and with the Board of Health. We could set up a date for that to occur based on Dennis's schedule. Maybe the first thing I should do is contact him and see when he would be available. But I don't see this as being a long meeting, you know, five or 10 minutes to do this. August 8th would be another Saturday with the aim of again having the maximum number of options available to us, whether it's outside or inside. And also by starting at 9:00 a.m. with the hope of one way or the other, getting all the business done at the meeting in that one session rather than to try and convince people to come out two or three nights.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
So if the board would be okay, I'll contact Dennis, see what his schedule is and get in contact with the board and get a date and time for a meeting. Probably won't be Friday. I'm trying to get ahold of Dennis on Wednesday, but it might be early next week on Monday or Tuesday next week.
Charlie, on town meeting, do you have in there in the agenda later on about DLS coming out with the statement that they're going to give July and August?
I wasn't planning on it simply because.
I just wanted to bring up the issue that if they do 112 with what they did for this fiscal year for July and August, then they made cuts to the total. We're gonna be facing cuts over a 10-month period versus a 12-month period. And that's going to affect the way that we plan next.
Um, not really, no.
It will for the, it will for other departments, especially the Chapter 70 funds.
Well, the school, yeah. I understand Silver Lake, but in terms of the town, one way or the other, we're gonna end up with the same amount of money. If they drop, as you were pointing out, if they drop the local aid by 10% for Fiscal 21 and they haven't dropped it the first two months, we're gonna, they're gonna play catch-up on us, you know, for each of the other 10 months. But we'll end up at the end of the year, the same amount. But yeah.
Just effective.
Yeah, so I mean, if Silver Lake, for instance, budgets on the basis of what they are gonna get in July and August as opposed to September through June, they're gonna be in a big hole.
Yep.
And we're not aiming.
Well, the elementary school's looking at doing the same thing right now, so that's why I was.
In terms of venues, wherever it's gonna be, we need to get some planning done. Let's assume that even it's gonna be on August 8th. Three places would, that might work with the elementary school gym, not the multipurpose. It's not big enough to house the people who would come with social distancing. Here are the ballfields behind the elementary school. And I should also check the Silver Lake Auditorium to see if that might be something, first, if it's available, but second, if it's large enough, again, given social distancing. I don't know if the board has any particular preference among those three venues because I'd have to work with Barbara Gator. You know, it's not something we can set up within a couple of days. We need to figure out the layout. We need to figure out what safety precautions we're gonna have, how we're gonna work AV. Dennis has some challenges, even holding a meeting in a multipurpose room, let alone the gym, you know, we need spotters or other things like that, even people to wipe down the microphones. So I didn't know what the boards, if the board had any preferences or would like me to look at several venues.
Well, the outside one, it depends greatly on what the weather's gonna be like. I mean, it can, that means that we may have to go forward and get tents, rent tents if it'll be outside, just in case the climate weather were heated.
Or have multiple alternative beds.
Yeah, I mean, basically, if it's raining on August 8th, for instance, we know ahead of time, you know, Dennis can say, fine, we're postponing the meeting again till the 15th, for instance, or something like that.
Silver Lake, if it's available, would be ideal.
So Silver Lake offered the use of the field, but not inside.
But I can ask. I mean, unfortunately, the fire chief put the kibosh on Kingston doing outfield, so I have to assume they're gonna put the kibosh on us too. I just like saying the word kibosh. Sorry.
I mean, my preference would be the gym.
Fox Stadium?
Maybe we should survey it a little bit and see with distancing, what looks like.
Well, that's a starting point. If I go over the gym, you know, I can contact Matt and Kane, get a visit over there, measure it out, figure out what, if we do the six feet. Probably a little more than that because the minute you get out of your chair, you won't be six feet away from somebody.
Well, we have the bleachers there too.
Yeah.
The other thing that other towns are doing is the family members could sit next to each other so that they could move the chair closer to move the six-feet line, so.
Yeah.
Not, not everyone had to be six feet apart.
That gets kind of crazy, but.
But we're only gonna put out a certain number of chairs, I suspect, one way or the other. Well, if the board likes, I mean, we don't, the board doesn't have to make a decision right now. I can simply start off with the gym as a possibility and see what the capacity might be.
I think it makes sense to survey it first and then see what we can get in there.
Just, uh, point of information, August 7th at Silver Lake is the graduation with the rain date as the 8th at Sarah Cofield.
Well, we're not looking to use the.
Well, I can't, Dennis can't move it to the 15th. He can move it to the 1st. He can't move it more than 30 days. I mean, we're not there yet. So it's something, um, something to think about, I guess. If we, if that's the case, I don't want to have that conflict, then we can go. Tom?
Ashley.
Oh, sorry.
Something did something where they had an overflow room. So I think they did have to have two moderators, but there might be a situation where maybe we could use the gym and the all-purpose room and maybe talk with them about how they can that work so that they can hold it.
We've done that in the past. And it can work, but it is, it is a lot more difficult. We were hoping to try to find a venue that we could anticipate taking, accommodating what we typically get for a turnout. But yeah, that's an option and we kind of kicked it around a little bit. But we've had experience with it in the past with monitors and everything. There's a lot of technical things that can go wrong. So we were, I think we had discussed, hopefully, trying to maybe avoid that, but it's a good suggestion.
Yeah, it's hard, for instance, it's hard to do a voice vote if you're in two different rooms. So, but yeah, I mean, it's possible. We'll first see how many people we can fit into the gym. Let's see. Town election, Town Clerk Barbara Gator thanks everyone for making the town election a success given the conditions of this event. If having problems with pencils was the worst problem, things went pretty well. There are gonna be more challenges in September and November, given the number of people voting. I think we had, I think Barbara said total, including mail-in ballots, we had a bit over 600 and I think most of the people actually came out by in person. If we got November, it might be 4,500 people. You're gonna end up with, if everybody comes out in person to vote, we're gonna have very long lines. We're looking at what happened with Georgia or Kentucky or Wisconsin or something like that.
Atlanta.
So, um.
Well, at least those, some of those cases, they weren't allowed to vote. Standing there at the flowers.
But what, you know, I'm gonna be working with Barbara on this. Mail-in voting obviously is gonna be encouraged, sort of to give people the reason, you know, you really want to wait in line for an hour versus doing it at your own convenience. The other thing is going to be that early voting for both elections is gonna be mandated. Now, it doesn't matter about the money issue, just for us, it's logistics. You'd probably have to move it up here, again, given the social distancing. They've done the early voting before, but it was already in, inside the clerk's office and they're not gonna be able to.
That can't happen, yeah.
In terms of logistics, that means that probably Barbara will be up here, Judy will be downstairs. All the, for, and I think they have to be open when we're open. So the regular hours from 8 to 4 Monday, at least through Thursday, if not Friday. The state legislature is also proposing, I believe, some of them, having early voting during weekends, which would be an additional cost to the town since we're not open. But Barbara's waiting to see what the legislation looks like. Early voting wouldn't happen, I believe, for the September primary until early mid-August, so she has some time to work the kinks out and find out exactly what the state's gonna require. But those are gonna be the larger challenges on both of the elections. But again, to encourage the mail-in as much as possible. Uh, sidewalk report. Green Seal, which is the engineering firm that the highway department uses, they did send in two proposals for the town on Monday. One for north side of Plymouth Street between the two entrances to Cranberry Drive and the other for the east side of Montpontas Street between Halifax Meadows and Halifax Housing Authority. I've notified Senator Brady, Representative Lonatra about the proposals. I've encouraged residents to contact the town's legislative delegation and the shared street program with letters of support. There's been some initial pushback from the programs. It appears that they are more in favor of temporary measures for the pandemic period or just the summer and fall rather than the permanent measures. So I think one of the reasons is they, as much as they have $5 million, it's only $5 million. And they'd rather see a lot of communities in a lot of places implement even something on a temporary basis for small dollars rather than a permanent basis in only a few places. So we'll see how it goes. Green Seal worked with Steve to send sort of a follow-up letter, which I've also sent to our legislative delegation, just see what happens with that. I don't have a date. It's supposed to be rolling applications, so I don't have a particular date when we'll find out yet. On the two court cases, there's been no change in status. Both ZBA appeal hearings with Mr. Andrews are going to be heard on July 13th. Manners Estates were the special perm in the well protection. There was a 9-on-a-2-2 vote on June 18th. The decision letters to be filed by July 2nd. I expect the decision's gonna be appealed. Town Hall reopening. We all signs are that everything worked. No problems as far as I know. I've talked to the staff here several times during the last two days. We just haven't run, I mean, it hasn't been a big crowd. It's not as if we had a line at the door or anything like that. And the people who are coming in are working with the town officials and town employees on the pandemic protocols, so it's working out. Pope's Tavern in the Holmes Public Library. There's no specific date recommended by the state for both of those types of facilities. And so the, when they open, it's gonna be depending on when the departments are ready. The Council on Aging Association, meaning the statewide ones, recommending working with the Board of Health and using the state guidance. And given that, including the cramped spaces, opening Pope's Tavern, what happened for a while. Sue Lawless, who's the Council on Aging Directors, looking into the possibility of renting a tent for a couple of months to have a space for outdoor events. Obviously, given the current gathering restrictions, it wouldn't be greater than 10. If the restrictions were relaxed, it could be more people. But that would be something that might be able to be covered under COVID funding. Jean Galat is now looking at July 13th, but much depends on the state guidelines for Phase 3 and any specific guidelines for libraries. So they are continuing to provide their curbside pickup at this point. Pope's Tavern Roof. Draft plans have been completed. The building inspector and the thryer chief had wanted additional details about insulation venting. I believe the building committees received those. I went over the cost estimate. It looks like the architect is believing that the cost is $125,000 to $130,000. My plan would be to go out to bid so that the town would have bids in hand for a town meeting, but I want to check with Vertex about whether they're gonna be able to help out on any bidding documents and what cost. So the hope is to get this done in time that we have something to bring to town meeting, whatever town meeting is gonna occur.
Charlie, you said $230,000?
No, $125,000 to $130,000 is what I read from the architect's estimates.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. When you're done, after that, we have an 8 o'clock appointment.
Okay, yep. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, we have an 8 o'clock appointment scheduled with George Latini. George is here. In-season restaurant, ZBA Lakeside.
Tom? I can't have, yes, either. I don't see you. You just hide behind the door.
All right, George, you wanna tell us?
George, you're gonna need to speak loudly to get to the mics.
Okay, here's the call. I'm here in front of you guys looking for a, maybe more like a one-day license for liquor. Basically, we could set up a tent the night before, how big a command, set up the tent. It all depends on what the state does. It's for weddings or large functions. If we can, if we can have it outside, we'd rather not do this at all. But we have so many weddings backed up like Railhouse, so. We've done it back in about, about 12 years ago. We did a couple of weddings on the lawn way back when. We had a big tent out there just for the day. We'd have somebody man the tent, you know, and basically take care of the people. We'd serve them out there. We had the dance floor. The band would either be set up or a PJ, a gazebo, or a deck.
My daughter.
I'm not sure if this is gonna happen. I'm just looking for a little guidance or, except what we've done before this happened, never had an issue with.
Yeah, my daughter was married up there.
Yeah.
Outside. You said one day. You mean one day a week or one day?
No, this would be like a one, hopefully, we don't do too many, you know, I'm guessing.
But one day at a time.
One day at a time.
Oh, okay.
I could give you a notice saying, hey, in two weeks, we're gonna bring a tent in on the lawns. We may know, we'll get you one of them. The fire department, they've already been up there and, and basically keep it 20 feet away and have an entry and exit. It would only be in two different locations. And it, it would only be in two different locations if you put the tent anyway with,
Are you going to be able to provide us some kind of a plan, George? I mean, we're going to have to have something to look at.
I believe there's something.
I, I didn't see.
Behind the tent.
Yeah.
Behind the tent.
It would need to be right behind the restaurant, exactly in one section or smaller area to put a tent. Or it would be pretty much right in front of the gazebo.
Okay.
So either location that would be, and then I can say, this would only be, this isn't for the restaurant or serving healthier as far as like a daily base. It would be a one-shot deal. If somebody wanted an outside wedding, we would basically be looking for a one-day liquor license for a tent and set it up. And it's only for the state if the state brings us to that.
I think I actually remember that particular event, one of them anyway, out back in the tent.
Yeah.
Back a while.
So, so the regulations that, that change would be to allow you to do this not just a one-time, but to be open, right?
And that would be a lot easier on the board. Basically, they would give you, they, they would give you a license on a temporary basis to serve alcohol at these particular locations based on the plan from now until November first. And so you would not have to come back for an alcohol license to the board each time or tell the board, okay, I'm doing it on July eighteenth, I'm doing it on July thirtieth, I'm doing it on August fifth. You wouldn't have to do any of that. All those dates would be covered.
Okay.
But it only covers you as far as alcohol is concerned. And you still need to work with the board of health, you need to work with the building inspector on the tent issues, and you need to work with the fire chief to make sure there's access for emergency vehicles.
Correct.
Um, as far as music is concerned, that you're going to need to come back to the board for because they have an outdoor entertainment license. We did have one neighbor, um, say, well, I'm not really happy about the idea of having music, amplified music, because they can hear it across the pond. But you can still come into the board whenever, you know, reach, but, you know, the board, I mean, right, you know, they have, they have their regular schedule. There's, the board's usually been very flexible during these months to meet, you know, as an unneeded basis, but they need some notice if you're going, if the party wants to have live entertainment, amplified music outside.
Okay.
How, how late would you think that event might go in the evening?
I would prefer to have it during the day, if you ask me. It's a lot easier. I mean, I, I really wouldn't want to go past, to be honest with you, I really would want to go past ten o'clock and I could kind of make that, we can kind of work them into that because we still got to clean up, which is.
I'm just thinking of the noise level because it, it is going to carry across the pond because there's nothing there to break.
Well, I know they've had them before, as I said earlier, my daughter had a wedding up there on the outside. They did a really good job on it.
Yeah.
You know, at that time, it's been a few years, but it's doable.
It's do, it's not something we really enjoy because it's a lot more hell, it's, you know, you're bringing everything out.
The only concern I have is, is if we still have this six-foot distance of social distancing, how, how are you going to control that?
Well, we set up the tables far enough away. So you, you're basically almost like what we're doing now with the new restaurant, you know, where you can eat inside. You want six, six people at tables, which really doesn't make any sense because if you pull out two chairs, not even like two feet apart.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We've got a ten feet apart, so I don't know how that little six foot thing works. But ideally, with a bigger oversized tent, you have to, you know, spread them out. I mean, you're not going to do a hundred and eighty people on the lawn, that's for sure, but distance, it's just not going to happen.
Because you've got some slope back there.
Yeah.
You can only do so much.
Right, it wouldn't really work without a tent and just.
Right.
But we have a lot of bribes who are getting backed up and there wasn't.
Understandable.
I, I, I would move it, definitely allowing as long as he's checking the proper authorities on the sales board. And I was just going to look at that voice, I don't know.
And, and the, uh, one day or the outside liquor?
Yeah, basically what you're doing, he has his license. What you're doing is a temporary change of the premises where the alcohol is served.
And that's all right with the state ABC?
I'm sorry?
Alcohol and beverage, it's all right with them?
Yeah, they've already said that they're.
Yeah, well, the, what the ABCC had sent out was a notice to all the municipalities saying that under the governor's directives and such, that on a temporary basis, for instance, they didn't have to, we didn't have to have a public hearing, we didn't have to notify the abutters. It's all being done on a temporary basis until November first.
Okay, that's a good move.
Only question I had was the tent showing closer? You've got the silt fence drawn through there?
That, that's an old plan that we have.
Okay.
Because it showed the exact building where it all is, so I just threw a tent up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's just an old plan.
Okay.
And as far as serving alcohol, serving alcohol would actually be inside the building where the bar is closest to the deck. We're not going to bring a bar and alcohol on the lawn. We're going to serve it from the building. They can carry it.
They're just going to be able to carry it up.
They can walk on the grass where they, we'll have it all cordoned off where they can't go.
Oh, so you're not, you're not serving it outside, they just can consume it outside?
They'll consume it on the lawn if they're going to consume.
Right.
Serving's going to stay inside. We're not going to.
That, that's really the only difference.
Correct, yeah, they can, they can.
I, I, I don't have a problem with it, I, I.
So.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If he's not going to serve it outside, is there really a change?
Yeah, because you can't walk outside.
You can't walk outside with alcohol.
If you've seen places that have patios.
Yeah.
You'll see a sign, maybe a stair that goes off the patio. You'll see a sign that says, no alcohol allowed on this point.
Okay.
And that's, this, in this case, think of it as the envelope and the envelope is going to get that much bigger as to where someone with a drink can go. Right now, they can go inside the building. This way, they can go, call out the corridors or not, we could circle around where the tents are into where the building is.
I know, I've seen the signs on the edge of the deck.
Right, yeah, we have the chain and all that.
Right.
Yes, and you got a fence on this side, right, of, by the, um, parking lot or something?
There's an opening, and usually when we do, if we put a tent over that side, we actually have somebody man there, so we keep everybody inside. We basically block them in, so they can't go walking out in their car or getting alcohol or go get lost and keep a separation, so it's.
If that's not to say block them in, George, just saying.
No. Try to corral them so we can keep them all in.
I don't think the fire chief would appreciate that.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not going to block them.
Just, just saying.
They can run to the water.
Anybody else? Gordon?
So we're, we're not approving where the tents are tonight, right?
No. Well, you're approving the location as to where alcohol can be consumed. If you want to, and say as far as where the tent, the farthest tent in, basically make a circle between the building and where the tents are, that's your limit.
And Troy added that, uh, as far as the event itself would have to be coordinated with the police, fire and the building department.
Because you're going to be putting tents up, taking them down.
Um, yeah, we, we bring a tent company in and they set it up. We would do that.
Yeah, you have to.
Twenty feet from the building and certain.
Yeah, they actually have to pull a permit for the tent because it has to show all its certifications and fire retardant tags and all of that.
So Troy, what was your limit to the area?
Um, there wasn't a limit. If I, my proposal is, is that in fact, we allow him to do, put his tents and people up, serve the alcohol as long as he goes through the health board, building committee and the board as far as an outdoor entertainment.
You can live with what you've got on the plan, right? So I mean, we could, we could, we could incorporate the plan into the.
Well, I was just going to say that I, I would just make a limit so you, there's no alcohol consumed in the parking lot area and keep everything inside the fence.
Yeah, yeah.
That way.
Yeah.
That way, if they have to move the tent over here, we're not just saying tented area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
That's fine. You can live with that, George.
Yeah, you want the grass areas, but.
Yeah. I think that's what you meant anyway, but, yeah.
Okay, second?
All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Thanks, George. Good luck. Good luck.
Good day. Good town, wherever you are.
Breathe shallow, breathe shallow.
Okay, we can get back to our, sure. Uh, land purchase for the campus project. The town's going to go out to bid for office of land that adjoin the police station on field property in order to build a municipal campus. Bids will be due in July. The board may wish to consider a special town meeting on this matter if the bidding proves fruitful and there, and any other possible appropriation for the sidewalk projects if they're not funded through the grant. Um, what's happened on the sidewalk is along with applying for the grant, we received a petition of a hundred and thirty-three signatures on it, which is not enough to force a town meeting, but it, under normal circumstances, if we were having a special a hundred signatures as long as they're certified. And the board may want to say, okay, look, if these people did that work, you may want to have a special town meeting on that and on the land purchase if there is one proposed. But we're not there yet.
Yeah, we'll see what, how it develops.
Um, long-term trailer permit for eighty-seven Plymouth Street. We'll have a public hearing scheduled for July twenty-eighth. The, uh, owners have a short-term permit with the building inspector and what happens is I believe after sixty days, um, before then, before the sixty days are up, the board has to have a hearing, I believe it's, uh, fire?
Fire.
Fire, it says fire, yeah. So a temporary situation there. Cemetery superintendent appointment, recommend appointment of Steve Hayward as cemetery superintendent for a period to end on May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Usually this is done when we do the election, but with the election postponed, Steve's term continued until Saturday, so the board would then reappoint him until next election day.
I'll, I'll move that.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Uh, vacation carryover for myself, um, obviously the board had already allowed for additional carryover. I was planning on taking much of last week off, well, that exactly didn't quite work out as planned. Um, so I'm asking for the board to allow me to take those four days, um, all, um, to carry over those also in addition to the other carryover the board approved.
You mean six days?
Oh, I don't know, I'll have to think about this.
So up to six, to carry over six because, um, I'll take the two personal days before the end of the year, but I still have six other vacation days available.
Some of.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, given the contract the board has with myself, which would have included a pay increase for next year and we don't have a budget to do that, and we don't expect to have funding to do that, since I think it's unlikely we're going to see any general pay increases, um, there is, we need to revise the contract to, for that so that the board, the town is not, um, conforming with the, in terms of the contract. So the idea would be a new contract with keeping the same wage rate for fiscal twenty-one as in fiscal twenty, so no pay increase, and then follow up with twenty-two and twenty-three with the pay increases along those lines. Um, it doesn't mean that I automatically will get a pay increase in twenty-two, we may be exactly in the same position that we are now, that we're not being able to do general pay increases. But I didn't, I wanted the town to be in conformance with the contract, so we need something new to do that.
Well, I applaud you for bringing it up because basically you're, uh, looking to catch your own pay here.
Yes.
Which is admirable, uh, especially knowing from the inside the type of work and the amount of time and effort you put into it. I, I thank you as an order. Um, would, do I have a promotion to renegotiate the contract?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Will be available for signatures later this week. We'll get it, all the signatures we need.
Okay.
Um, municipal and school building committee staff recognition. The, I believe the board would like to recognize the staff, I think, obviously Scott has been doing far beyond what, um, he was probably thinking of doing, but also I think the board wanted to recognize Tom Schindler and Andrew Elliott Smith, I believe it is.
Yes.
Their, all, their work, so.
Yes, yes, and, and they, they have not missed any workdays through the whole COVID situation. Um, they have adjusted their schedules to accommodate the cleaning, uh, when the buildings were available. Um, uh, they've done a terrific job, uh, and, uh, thought it would be a good idea. We can't give them any money, but we can at least give them some recognition.
Also, we, we, well, so thanks, I was in the hurrah for Tom sitting there catching a fox with a bottle.
Oh, yes, yes, he did rescue the fox. That's right, we might want to include that.
And had his head stuck in the bottle.
Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second, should we invite them in, give them some sort of certificate?
Well, we thought about doing that, but we weren't sure about when, if we'd start getting over ten people and.
I mean, we could do a photo op at some point.
Yeah.
With the board and the two of them and Scott, for instance. We should do that.
Do we have a certificate that we could give them?
We can do it, yeah, yeah, Pammy can make something. She's got something.
Charlie, Charlie, yes.
We'll, we'll work, we'll work on something, yeah.
We'll get it, yeah.
Okay, so we need a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who first and second, I'm sorry, Pammy.
I second it. I think, well, whatever.
So, I don't know. You move it?
No, I did not, no.
I, I moved it.
I let Pammy pick. So there's a vote, right, okay, we're done, good, yeah. Uh, you already recognized the outgoing planning board members. Uh, Franklin Street revision of the pilot as the Franklin Street solar field is not yet in operation. The operator asked that the pilot be revised, that the start and end dates would be more, moved by one year. The board of assessors agrees, um, with this change in the agreement. Also, attorney Mayo had sent a document for the chair to sign for, uh, that needs to go to the registry. It should have gone to the registry with the original pilot, but it can go with this one. Um, so if the board would approve that and I'll get, we'll get the signatures from the board this week.
Yeah, they've been struggling with national grid to get it online. They just haven't been able to do it. And at this point, it's going to go off of fiscal twenty-two and, uh, this is appropriate.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Uh, Wareham Police Department, thank you, um.
Chief, chief.
Yes, I just wanted, well, they just try and, uh.
Chief, do you want to speak? He's on.
Okay. Do I?
Is he muted?
I, I have a, I'm having a really hard time hearing Charlie, so I'm not sure what, where you guys are on the agenda, so I'm not sure what I'm speaking on.
We're at the Wareham, uh, Police Department, thank you.
Okay.
He's going to thank himself.
Well, I, I can read. I can read the letter.
Charlie's going to read the letter, chief.
Do you want to move over here?
No, I can.
So he can hear it?
He can't hear me right now?
Yeah, that's what he's saying, he can't hear you. That's, he was texting in earlier.[1607.38] I can read it.
Why you read it, could you pass it down?
Or I can have the chair, can, chief, can you hear Tom talking?
Yep, I can hear him fine, the only one I'm not, uh, I'm not a hot talker, it was Charlie, uh, maybe because he doesn't have the, the microphones that you have.
Yeah.
He's just a soft-spoken guy, chief, that's what it is, he doesn't say much.
Wareham Police Department, June nine, two thousand twenty, to the Halifax Board of Selectmen. On Saturday, June six, two thousand twenty, the Wareham Police Department requested multiple police departments for assistance with a large protest at our police station. During the event, your police chief, yes, Shavs, was instrumental in securing our station, providing expert advice and counsel. Our officers were very impressed with Chief Shavs and found him to be a consummate professional. Chief Shavs is an excellent example of a leader, and Halifax is very lucky to call him chief. The Wareham Police Department stands ready to assist the Halifax Police Department at a moment's notice if we are requested. Please extend my thanks to this fine man for his expert assistance during this event. I believe there are two types of police officers, for one, it is a job, the other, a calling. I know which type he is. Sincerely, John A. Walsec, Chief of Police. Very nice, congratulations, chief, and thank you for representing Halifax like that.
Thank you, I appreciate this, Chief Walsec, uh, it was a, you know, very tense, uh, event, and, uh, you know, his leadership and, you know, the other chiefs present, uh, you know, keep for good, we can, so, I'm, I'm, uh, I really, I thank Chief Walsec with this kind of words.
Next.
And thank you for representing us that well, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, back to Charlie. Okay. Um, series of line transfers that Pam has that she'll be passing down to you. First one is for twelve thousand dollars from special needs transportation to special needs tuition due to changes in transportation tuition costs.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second one is twenty-one thousand from snow and ice to stormwater due to street sweeping costs, and obviously, we didn't have a lot of snow this year.
Thank you. Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And third is five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents from Board of Health expense to health inspector for vacation accrual payment.
So move.
I don't know, if we don't, if we don't give it to her, does it mean she has to stay?
No, she'll just leave that much earlier.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next one is public records request, Gordon had asked for a discussion on this.
So I, I had asked what, uh, it was request from department to department and how that should be handled, and how it's previously been handled, so I just wanted to have a talk about that.
Charlie, why the hell do we do it now?
Well, I, I'm not sure, it's because of what had occurred during the last couple of weeks. What we had, there was an incident here at Town Hall a couple of weeks ago, we had a town official come in, demand from another town official, certain records, right then, right now, um, if we're trying to do this in a cooperative atmosphere of working together, I don't think that that attitude was appropriate, um, and obviously, things escalated from there. What I tried to do was then find a way of making sure that the town official who requested the documents had certain rights under the general laws. There is nothing specific that differentiates between a town official requesting documents from another town official, for whatever reason, and anybody else requesting those same documents. The idea, obviously in terms of the best practice, is that there's a cooperative nature that we're all working together, but that can be certainly affected by the attitude shown by the person who is making the request for the records. By preserving that person's ability to, in fact, legally require that the documents be turned over within a certain amount of time, that meant that the department that needed to provide the records was, have to do so. That was the best way I could see at the time of dealing with that. We had another town official who requested some of the same documents. I did not want to treat different town officials differently in terms of how to process the same, the request for the same documents, so I said to both town officials, this is the path to follow in this case. Now, I understand that some people would believe in both cases I aired, but I also was dealing with a difficult situation as well as I could, I'm not sure what the solution is when we have a town official who, in fact, allegedly at least, says, I want those documents now, no questions asked. I then talked about, what about your children, or in the end also says, I pay your salary. If those things are part of a cooperative atmosphere of courtesy, then tell me that, and I'll make sure that all departments, all boards, all committees know that that's the level of courtesy that we expect, that in fact, people can demand without any reasons, without any courtesy, that the, someone also working in this building or in other buildings must provide those documents now. I don't believe that, but if the board wants to institute that as a policy, I'm happy to tell everybody else to do it that way.
Well, it, the policy's always been, at least if I remember right, the law is that in a reasonable time, any records that are asked, it must be presented to a person in a reasonable time, in other words, it'll take six months to get something out to an individual. What's our, what's our gauge now as how long it takes for?
Well, under the public records law, it doesn't matter who makes the request. In general, there are always exceptions, but in general, the town official, the board, the committee, whoever is a records access officer for that department, must provide those documents within fourteen days. There may be a cost associated with that, especially if the request is for a voluminous number of records, but there's no requirement under the law that those documents be given right over then. In the case of the assessor's office, the documents that were being requested right at that time may have included confidential information on certain properties. The assessors wanted time to be able to review those documents, redact that information that was confidential, and then provide those copies. The person who was requesting that information didn't seem to understand that at all. But I think, you know, and again, if anybody, including that person, had approached this in a cooperative atmosphere, and mind you, the Town Hall was closed at that time, yes, the person was in the building, the person had been asked to come in to sign various documents for the planning board, but then use that ability of being in the building to then demand documents from the regulatory department, from the assessors, and from the board's selectmen. And the incident, unfortunately, that was worse, was with the Board of Assessors. Things got pretty heated, and again, like I said, what I tried to do was preserve that person's ability to get the documents they wanted, despite what had happened.
So how about going forward, how about we have some internal document request form, where somebody can send a document request, you know, Board of Selectmen's requesting, you know, the Board of Health file on a piece of property that's, um, being looked at by a different board or something, and then we have a, a form with an agreed-upon, get the information back in a week, or something along those lines.
My only problem with that is that different requests require different amounts of effort. For instance, that particular request in the assessor's office was voluminous, uh, there was a tremendous amount of material, uh, and at that particular moment, which exacerbated the whole problem, was that the principal assessor was by herself during lunch while her staff was away, and online with the Department of Revenue, so there was no way that that was going to happen. Now, if somebody had gone into that office, and had seen it in the past, and had a document that they were looking for, they would have said, get, let me finish, and I will get that document for you, but when you're asking for the types of documents, I, I mean, I don't know how we qualify this thing, we would have to go into some horrific detail, um, I'm not saying it can't be done, but different requests require different amounts of effort, I guess is where I'm going back to.
But, I guess I'm just saying, let's, let's put a process to go forward with and say, i- if it's a week, if a, if boards meet every other week, or every week, whatever it is, we give the other board time to.
That's, that, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm cutting you off, I didn't need to.
I, I, I'm just saying, let's, let's put down a process in place to, to have the other boards work together cooperatively. I understand what happened before, I'm not trying to discount what happened, what I'm trying to do is move forward and say, here's a process that we have, let's, this is the process we should try out, and if it doesn't work, we can adjust it, that, that's all.
No, no, I, I understand, and I agree with you, but do we make a distinction now? Are we talking about individual board members for their own personal research, are we talking about a directive from a board in total, sitting in a meeting, asking for this information? I think there is a distinction there.
Well, so, I mean, I think that board members should be able to ask for things that they're researching. I, I don't have a problem with individuals or boards being able to ask for that information. I know that I've asked, you know, being on the finance committee, I've asked for documents to back up other items, I asked about permits a couple, I don't know, two months ago, to try to look at a long-term scenario of budgeting, so.
But you didn't go in demand.
Well, so, right, I didn't, I, I, but I guess what I'm saying is, if we put the process out there, that we, we ask for a document and say, you know, can you get back to me in a week?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we all think about this, jot down some ideas, and then we will, we can try to work something out, get some input from Charlie.
Or even get input from the other departments for that.
I'm just going to go on with that, get some input from the people who might be requesting, and come up with a, if not a, a policy that isn't necessarily, but at least that everybody has climbed onto, and, and I think that's the way to do it. To keep talking about communication and everybody talking together, let's do it in that fashion, I think.
Okay, I, I'm just, the reason why I said a week was because if you have a meeting, the next day, you know you want information, it gives you a few days to look over it before your next meeting, if you're meeting every other week, that's, that's why.
Again, it depends.
I don't really have a problem with that, Gordon, it, but it all comes down to how that person presents themselves. Uh, we could have a form, I don't disagree with having a form saying that I, I require these documents, and then individual Santa, well, it'll take a couple of days, or I could do it right now, but to come in and demand something irately, that's not good.
Yeah, so, and I agree, and all I'm saying is, let's try to just put the process in place so we don't have, so, somebody says, okay, if you want these documents, here's the form, fill it out, and we'll create a policy as it is for the town. I mean, we have a bylaw that says that the records are supposed to be open and all that stuff, and our meeting minutes are supposed to be online, and some departments aren't following that regulation, so.
Following through with that, I was thinking about this earlier, we're talking about open records, and somebody wanting to come in, set up the time to, to look, look through records. It wasn't that long ago where we had an incident where somebody had suggested, it might have even been you, I don't remember, that somebody may have altered the file and removed the document, or, or what have you. Not that that would prevent this particular thing when we're talking with employees, but I personally think I have a problem making records available to anybody without some observation involved, because anybody can take a document out of a file. I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about.
Yeah, so, I mean, so that goes back to the whole electronic documents thing that we were talking about, going back to COVID spending, was, was, if we have, we certainly had a lot of time for some members of our staff during this process that could have been scanning and uploading records and all that, so I think, I really would like to see us go to electronic record filing system so that we get past this whole thing, and I know that, I've asked for documents, I know it takes time, it takes time out of other people's schedules, what they have for a workload, and I get that, I just think that there's been a number of times when people ask for something, that they don't really need copies of everything if they know what's in the folder.
I, I, I don't disagree with you, and, and that's a solution. My only, my only reason for bringing it up was, it started dawning on me, I said, you know, if somebody wanted to remove something from a, from a file, or if somebody wanted to insert something in a file for whatever reason, unless somebody's observing that.
Well, so, I mean, that goes back to a filing system, which, again, electronically, it would seem to me that you would, you would have, on, on the insert of that table, you would, you would have meeting minute, document A, document B, document B, so you could know that who, you know, Gordon checked out this folder on this date, these files were in it, maybe, maybe I should look in file B, because he also looked at that document to see if that folder, that document's in that folder.
I don't disagree with you, that would help that problem, but we're not there yet, but let, let's see if we can come up with a plan, I mean, it's labor intensive, there, there are other issues, I don't know if any COVID money can help with that, or maybe gets outside help with that perhaps, I don't know, I don't know if we can tie that to COVID, but that's something to look at, and I don't have a problem with that, I think that's a good idea.
It just.
But I just, my only concern there was to keep track of the documents we have, so we don't get into a situation where something's missing. I, I've seen contractors try to do it, try to take house plans out of a, out of a folder, because they need the plans for a house they want to build. I'm serious, I, I've caught people taking plans out of, out of folders, can I look at this address and try and swipe the eleven-by-seventeen plans?
Well, I, I just think if we, if we have a policy for internal use, we also could carry on that policy to external use, it just seems like.
But we also have to be cognizant of the amount of material being requested, that has to be part of the equation. When, if you start setting dates, you know, we're talking several hundred documents, or, you know, going back ten years or what have you, I mean, that's not going to happen in a week with the current staff.
Hey, I, I get that, I'm just saying, if we put a policy in place, there's always going to be reasons why things don't happen, but if we have a policy, we're a board, like the Board of Health, now, you guys meet on Wednesday nights, so if they have a meeting Wednesday night, they're looking for a document, they send a request in on Thursday morning, so if they could get that document by the following Wednesday or Thursday, then they'd have a week to review, because not everybody, you know, has time to review everything.
And honestly, I don't, you know, I, I've been in the building twenty odd years, I have not seen a real problem with this, but I don't have a problem myself with establishing a policy that everybody sees and understands what their responses should be, as long as we make it reasonable, that, that's a point of concern.
Yeah, just.
But we can, we can have a meeting with the department heads and.
Good.
Everybody bring some thoughts to the table, and, and let's see if we can come up with something that everybody's on board with.
Okay.
Gordon, did you want to segue into the?
Oh, sure, the electronic submission of plans, so when we had the meetings, uh, when we were talking about multifamily and in-laws, and, so right now, the bylaw for site plan and other sections of the bylaws requires paper submissions, seven papers, four papers, whatever it is, I, I would like to go through the bylaws, um, and just add an electronic submission, and, to those sections, and then come back and report back of what changes those would be in the bylaws, and report it back to the board, and ask the board to support sending a.
But not in lieu of paper, right? In addition to paper?
I, I'm saying in addition of paper.
Okay, yeah, because that's, that's how I would like to see, that's what I do where I'm at, I require hard copy, and I want it in PDF.
Yeah, I just think.
But we have a plotter, so I can print it if I need to, which, which makes a difference, and I would come down.
That goes back to that COVID money question, about the electronic document stuff, um, yeah, I mean, we, we request, I know, I've done my public records, uh, request, and we can't reproduce items in Town Hall that we require, so that doesn't seem like that makes a lot of sense, that we require this size, but if somebody wants to come and get a copy of it, they.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, just a note, if you're looking at plotters, or at some point, we're looking at plotters, not all of them copy, so that, that's an issue too, unless you do have it on.
Yeah, you need a, you need one that scans and one that prints.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I would be in support of whatever we do for electronic documents, whatever sizes that we require.
In addition to.
We're able to scan it, and we're able to reproduce it.
And that's an easy thing for all the engineers, they all have it electronically, and that's, that's not a big deal, I get them myself all the time, in time and no complaint.
I guess my point of question is, is that to have all these modern facilities, what's the cost going to be to the town?
Well, I was just, we were just saying, that hopefully we can get some COVID money to cover the equipment at least.
I, I think right now, I mean, the way we were shut down, if you wanted a copy of a plan, the admin assistant would have to take the plan, go to We Print today.
And get, and get copies.
Make a copy, or ask them to scan it, we have to pay, the person has to pay for the travel time, has to pay for the mileage, you know, it seems to me like the people that are filing these records requests, if, if the money was going back to the town, we probably would have covered the cost of, you know, the plotter that scans, so I would be in favor of whatever we do for electronic records moving forward with the, whatever system that you've been looking into.
Uh, that makes perfect sense, and it's our, it's, it's there, it isn't like anybody's undoing burden to provide this information, they've got.
So, I guess what I was asking on this one is, if it would be acceptable to the board if I could go through the bylaws, look through the books, see how many times that we actually request paper documents?
You don't already know?
I have a good idea.
I'm pretty sure you already know.
But, um, and then at the next meeting, just request that we send that to the planning board for bylaw changes, because it would have to be another public hearing.
If you miss one, it's your fault, all right.
It'll be, yeah, we can put that as a note, Gordon submitted these, but if that's okay with the board for the next meeting?
I don't have any problem.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Um, Legislative Staff for the Sliverall Dana Road, the hearing is scheduled, um, on Thursday, June twenty-fifth, sometime between one and five, by the Joint Committee on State Administration, I'm in contact with Representative Bonatra, she's going to find a way of, of us being able to submit something electronically, um, in writing, so to speak, um, so at least there's a hearing on it, so it's, the gears are continuing to move up there in Boston. Uh, let's see, I gave you a copy of the youth and recreation summer plans, um, obviously, that's all dependent on what the state's going to allow in terms of policies for camps or anything, we like a sports program or anything like that, but I wanted to provide you what Dick Steele's hopes are that he's going to be allowed to do later this summer. There's no action for the board to take about that.
Did he, uh, talk with Scott about fogging, or?
No, not that I'm aware of, I, I will find out. Uh, Visiting Nurse Association contract with the Visiting Nurse Association of Cape Cod for fiscal twenty-one, two copies, um, there's money in the budget via the Board of Health, and the chair would sign those copies, and the board would approve, and we'll get the chair to sign that later.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the Senior Tax Workoff Program, Council Agent Director Susan Lawless had asked that the board approve. the board approve the income and asset guidelines for the elderly property tax exemption under clause 41(c), that, and to use those to determine the eligibility for the program. The state updates these numbers every year and the program's limits would then be adjusted accordingly, that does require a motion by the board.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
The board's likely received a request from Conservation Commission Chair Jerry Fitzgerald. He had asked that Amy Troop be barred from any interactions with Teresa Renad, the Conservation Commission Secretary. If the select will wish to consider this, Town Council recommends a public hearing on the matter and that any ban if instituted should be only instituted with good cause and for a reasonable limited amount of time and scope. So I don't know what the board wants to do with Mr. Fitzgerald's request.
It goes back to records and anything else, being open for people to come in and make a request, talk. Are you going to have exceptions to that? That's going across my seat.
Well, I believe that the request, if there's, if there's a no contact in essence, that was the board's wish and they wouldn't be doing that tonight, then the board could in fact, as part of that, say, okay, if there's a request that needs to be made to the Conservation Commission by Ms. Troop, that we work out whatever that process is going to be. For instance, it could go to Terry's supervisor as an example.
Well, the whole idea of having a form to fill out may limit that contact, if you fill the form out and they pass it in, because a verbal request sometimes misunderstands.
Um, I, I, I inherently don't like barring anybody from Town Hall.
Yeah, and I don't think the request is to bar Ms. Troop from Town Hall, it's just interaction.
From the conservation, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed. But at the same time, uh, uh, if somebody feels that, uh, there's some inappropriate contact, uh, we need to look at both sides of that. Perhaps, um, we should have some contact with both, which I think is what you started to say, Charlie.
No, I didn't, I, I simply, I didn't know what the board wanted to do on that. All I can do is provide what Mr. Fitzgerald wrote.
Yeah.
Provide it to you, what his request is, and then the board needs to figure out a process if it wants to do anything at all. All the Town Council said that if the board wants to consider the matter, it should do so via a public hearing, you know, and if it did make any sort of decision to limit contact, there should be good cause for it and that it, you would believe that, you know, it can't be for an infinite amount of time, it needs to be, you know, reasonable based on the situation.
So did Mr. Fitzgerald witness the interaction?
No, I don't believe so.
Do we still have EAP?
Yes.
Is that something we could refer to some arbitration or?
Well, they don't do arbitration, it's more trying to talk it out.
Talk it out, well, that's what I, yeah, I mean, where it's there, I've used it in the past when I had some issues to address between people, uh, and I thought it was pretty helpful. Uh, maybe that's something we could employ in this particular thing. Do you want to think about it?
Yeah, I, it's, it's really up to the people involved.
Yeah.
Um, if they want to do something like that, I can suggest, you know, I can start, I can make the initial phone call, give EAP program their contact information and then it goes on from there, then I step away from that.
Right.
It's basically, you know, the only thing I might do is schedule a room or something like that and not playing a role.
The people involved will talk it out with the EAP rep, I don't know if you've had the experience.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's that serious, and I haven't talked to anybody, I've read the report, if that's serious, if a person fears that some harm might come up there being around this individual, then there's of course restraining order. I mean, for us to say, if a person can't come to Town Hall, it's a public building.
I, I think this is an instance where the EAP program actually does some good, it can be helpful, it may not be helpful, the participants may not want to, to talk to anybody else, so, uh, my, I'm trying to remember how it worked out, whether they talked to people individually and then collectively, I think is how it.
Right, I think they go, you know, they'll put, talk to one, they might start off with both of them and say, look, this is how, these are how things work, I'm going to talk to you, then you're going to, and then we're going to switch, we're going to talk to you, and then maybe I'll talk to both of you again, maybe I go back and forth a couple of times.
I think where that program is in place, I think it's not a terrible place to start. Um, if, if that doesn't help the situation, then we can take another look at it. But at least we made an attempt to do it, um, without going to drastic measures.
And may, and, and, you have a impartial individual doing the talking, but I have somebody that may have other, other means.
I, I, I act, like I said, I had, uh, two folks and I found it, uh, it, it was very helpful. I, and honestly, I didn't have a whole lot of hope for it, but it seemed to work, so I think it's worth a, a try and it's not particularly invasive.
Well, I'll move if that's what, what you feel may work.
Maybe get a motion to ask Charlie to look into the EAP, uh, its employee assistance program for anybody wondering what EAP stands for.
Right.
I'm fine with it, but I, I think if we're going to have a hearing, I think you need both people here and be invited and, uh.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to maybe avoid that step is what, what I was getting.
Yeah, the EAP is not a public hearing.
Right.
The EAP is, mediation's a good word to use, it's a private situation involving the two parties and the person from the EAP program. It, and it's not a decision-making situation, it is to try and work things out with those two people so that the relationship can be repaired to some extent.
If they both want to try it, that's fine?
Yeah, I mean, that's it, we ask, if they don't, then that's, that's over, and then we go from there. I think it's a reasonable approach.
I second that motion.
Well, I'm not sure we had a motion, but I'll make a motion if we need to.
Who's second?
I think Troy did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, the next thing, just, um, upon, upon update, the ponds are still, algae is still at low levels, so they're still usable. Um, I'm going to try and schedule the treatment in July, I've been working with Solitude in the state to try and get the approvals necessary. For Bud's Goods, the license will have a form scheduled for July 14th, this is a response to the license application up at the state level, it's not particular, um, to the town in the sense of that, you know, there's an approval necessary at this point from the town, it's simply that the Cannabis Control Commission had asked for input from the town, so there's a deadline of 60 days, we'll still be within the 60 days come July 14th, um, but what the board wanted to do was open it up to public. I'm not quite sure, we'll see how relaxed the gathering rules are at that point, if it's, we're still the gatherings of 10, we may have to have a Zoom meeting as for, for that portion or for that meeting, but we'll see how that works out. Um, temporary quorum change for town meetings, uh, the state laws that were enacted do allow the board's selection with consultation with a moderator to temporarily reduce the quorum for town meetings during the state of emergency. There, I'm only discussing with that with the board tonight, not for the board to consider a change, but to say to the board, if you are going to consider a change, for instance, let's say you're at the July 14th and you wanted to discuss this, the prior notice has to be given, so that, um, if the board wants to discuss this at the meeting on July 14th, the board should tell me that now, so I can do, take the steps necessary to allow the board to make a, a decision if it wishes to.
I, I, I personally don't, don't favor that, I would like to find out something you would, we could have the full 100 people that we require because they voted the law by law in. You know, I mean, she's have the right to vote it out. I can't see my stepping in saying, only 50 people can come, now who's going to pick the 50?
Well, it's, the quorum in this case is simply not how many people can attend, it's the minimum number of people we would need, we could not, simply quorum of 75, for instance, does not mean that once 75 people come in, the 76th person can't come in, all it means is that you can do business with a smaller number of people.
We tried to overwhelm it when we got shot down.
Well, that was a bylaw, this would be a decision of the board that it can do on a temporary basis. If the board doesn't want to consider that, that's fine, all I'm saying is if the board does want to consider that, there are steps that have to take place in order for the board to consider that.
I really don't want to change the quorum.
I think I'd like to leave it the way it is, at 100, if we find that it's like impossible to get 100 people on that, like, maybe we can take another look at it, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be.
Um, COVID policies, the only question that has come up to me so far is, we had talked on the quarantine for outstate travel, the advice, it's the basically the urging of the governor's office, is that people who go out of state quarantine for 14 days, and what the board had asked was employees to please be, use discretion in doing so, if you're taking a day trip up to Nashua or down to Pawtucket, it's one thing, if you're, but if you're going to Florida on an airplane, we probably want you to quarantine for those two weeks. So the question's been put to me, okay, someone takes a vacation, for instance, in Connecticut or Rhode Island or New Hampshire or Maine for two weeks, are we asking that person to quarantine or not?
It's a trust level.
Yeah.
You trust that the person, even if they go out of state, whether they can tell you or not, they'll quarantine, because how are you going to know?
So did we have, did you set that policy at the last meeting where they, they had to self?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a self-certification, but the policy of the self-certification says, for instance, let's say you go up to dinner in Nashua and come home, we're not, we're looking at that differently than if you go down to Palm Beach.
Okay.
And say, you know, please make some good judgments here, if you're going to Nashville, if you're going to Pawtucket, go shopping or for a meal or visit a relative just for a day trip, we'll, we'll look at it one way. If you're going to Florida in an airplane and spending two weeks there, or a week there, or just even a weekend, we're looking at that differently.
Okay.
So the question came to me is, let's say someone, instead of getting an airplane, goes down to Squamica, for instance, in Connecticut for a week, do we say to them, fine, you've now spent enough time out of state that we want you to take that two-week quarantine or not? And if the decision is from the board, we're still asking you all to please make some good decisions about this, we're not, as you all mentioned, there's no policing of it, short of somebody who decides to keep posting photographs of where they are for those two weeks. No, I don't know what the board would like to do, if there's any change in the policy or just leave it alone?
I think we can't police it anyway, I, I, I'm inclined to leave it alone, but.
I see a little change, leave it as it is, because it all comes down to a trust and honestly, whether somebody's going to come forward and tell you that they want to do that. There's no way of policing it unless we call every employee and ask them personally, will United States this week?
Um, okay, uh, we've already dealt with Lakeside Villa, with their alcohol license, Grill 58, they would like to do the same thing, their information came in, I think it was today, um, so it's not on the agenda, we have to, so I don't know what the board would like to do about, I mean, we, we're talking about meeting with Dennis at some point in the next few days, whether you want me to put this on the agenda also, so that we can get it in, I mean, otherwise it's waiting until July 14th, and I've seen no reason to wait in that long.
I, I, I think we would be doing everybody a disservice by putting it off.
Yeah.
If we're going to meet anyway, let's get it done, I think.
I agree.
I know that she said Wednesday, Wednesday, she was talking about.
Well, I know, but we may not need her here.
Okay.
I mean, and we may, you know, maybe doing, it's up to the board, I mean, if the board wants someone here personally at the meeting, Pam has said that we need to wait until at least Wednesday.
Well, if she's coming from far, she need to self.
Quarantine, right.
14 days, so.
Well, they can Zoom it.
Yeah, so.
The interesting thing with Deb and Dave is they don't fly, they drive.
Well, still.
I, I, I understand, but they're still coming.
So I think maybe the best thing is, we, this way Dennis can Zoom in, we've done that before, we then can Zoom in, we'll just wait until Wednesday or after.
Yeah.
So, you know, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday next week, I'll get in contact with them, come back to the board, get a time and date set, it would be one of those three days next week.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, planned power outage, just for the board to know, we're, have one scheduled next Tuesday from 4:00 in the morning to 5:00, the departments have been notified, it's going to also hit the town barn because Hemlock Lane's going to be shut down for the hour. I just left myself a note that I need to talk with the fire and police departments, even though they won't be directly affected, but they'll know that the buildings are not powered up at that point. Uh, changes in personnel, Board of Health agent, new agent will be Robert Valerie of Plymouth, he starts on July 1st of 2020. Um, in fact, did I miss? I think I missed the, um.
The, the town hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he did.
Where am I?
It's like on the 7th page there.
Um, Town Accountant Sandra Nolan had asked that the Board of, Board appoint Diane Mulready Phillips as the Assistant Town Accountant for the period July 1st through June 30th of '23, so July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2023.
I, I, I'll move that, Sandy seemed pleased with her choice. All those.
Well, just a question, is she an accountant by trade or do you guys know the background on?
She has some accounting type work background, but Sandy had interviewed quite a few people and thought she was the strongest candidate of everybody, so.
Okay.
I'm going with her because she's the one who's going to have to train her and work with her.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I had mentioned to the board before the meeting began, our animal control officer has given notice to our police chief, all leaving on July 7th, I'll be working with the chief to start the recruitment, um, in Norton, um, the, this is an appointment that the board does, maybe we'll do, maybe if we're lucky, we'll have, be able to set up interviews for the 14th, or maybe we'll have a specific day or whatever for the board to meet just to do the interviews.
Now, did Fox just put her over the top, I mean, because she didn't catch the fox with her head out?
We should have talked, or maybe could reach out to Brian Kling, I know he does both in the other towns.
Mm-hmm.
It might be something he might be at least interested in, uh, applying for.
Right.
I've worked with Brian and he seems very confident.
Do we have a mutual aid animal?
Well, technically, under the police contract, all the police officers are assistant animal control officers, so. Um, then I don't, I think that Steve was in, and so he gave you updated, um, fees for the graves, um, showing what they are right now and what he would like them to be established?
He's connecting right now.
When was the last time he updated us?
I do not know, I'm sorry.
He did say he thought he was low on the, on the graves.
Says he's trying to bring himself in.
Into line, yeah.
Steve, Troy, Troy had a question for you. Can you unmute yourself, Steve? And he just signed off.
Right.
So I guess he unmuted, but maybe we'll give him a minute?
Well, I don't know if we can hold off making a decision on this tonight, because I agree, I can remember the last time he upgraded him.
Okay. Do you want, most, do you want me to motion the table then till the next meeting?
That's up to the chair.
Yeah, I, I, I'll listen to a motion, or we, or the very next.
Bring it to the meeting.
To the next meeting, yeah. Exactly, yeah. Yeah, I'll listen to a motion for that.
Motion, oh, now he's reconnecting.
Okay, well, we'll see if he gets back on.
I'll listen to a motion to reconnect.
Reconnect. And drops.
Okay, we'll go back to the, uh, motion that was originally on the floor.
I'll make a motion to table to our next meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pam, is there anything that we missed? Pam, is there anything that we missed?
No.
Word?
Oh, just one thing, those bills.
Oh, good bills.
Oh, the selectmen's bills. Didn't we do that?
Pardon?
No, we, yeah, we did the selectmen's bill.
All we have is national grid.
National grid.
Oh, yeah.
Town hall electricity.
Yeah.
$1,716.59.
Yeah, I have, I seconded you.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we got that.
You did.
Thank you. All right, so we're done with that portion. Are we going to go into executive session?
No reason to.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of...
Soft shoe or hard?
Uh, either one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
People that we require because they voted the law by law in. You know, I mean, she's got the right to vote it out. I can't see my stepping in saying, only 50 people can come. Now who's going to pick the 50?
Well, it's, the quorum in this case is simply not how many people can attend. It's the minimum number of people we would need. We could not, simply quorum of 75, for instance, does not mean that once 75 people come in, the 76th person can't come in. All it means is that you can do business with a smaller number of people.
We tried to overwhelm it when we got shut down.
Well, that was a bylaw. This would be a decision of the board that it can do on a temporary basis. If the board doesn't want to consider that, that's fine. All I'm saying is if the board does want to consider that, there are steps that have to take place in order for the board to consider that.
I really don't want to change the quorum.
I think I'd like to leave it the way it is at 100. If we find that it's like impossible to get 100 people on that, like, maybe we can take another look at it, but...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be...
Um, COVID policies, the only question that has come up to me so far is, we had talked on the quarantine for out-of-state travel. The advice, it's the, basically, the urging of the governor's office, is that people who go out of state quarantine for 14 days. And what the board had asked was employees to please be, use discretion in doing so. If you're taking a day trip up to Nashua or down to Pawtucket, it's one thing. If you're, but if you're going to Florida on an airplane, we probably want you to quarantine for those two weeks. So the question's been put to me, okay, someone takes a vacation, for instance, in Connecticut or Rhode Island or New Hampshire or Maine for two weeks, are we asking that person to quarantine or not?
It's a trust level.
Yeah.
You trust that the person, even if they go out of state, whether they can tell you or not, they'll quarantine, because how are you going to know?
So did we have, did you set that policy at the last meeting where they, they had to self?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a self-certification, but the policy of the self-certification says, for instance, let's say you go up to dinner in Nashua and come home. We're not, we're looking at that differently than if you go down to Palm Beach.
Okay.
And say, you know, please make some good judgments here. If you're going to Nashville, if you're going to Pawtucket, go shopping or for a meal or visit a relative just for a day trip, we'll, we'll look at that one way. If you're going to Florida in an airplane and spending two weeks there, or a week there, or just even a weekend, we're looking at that differently.
Okay.
So the question came to me is, let's say someone, instead of getting an airplane, goes down to the Squamica, for instance, in Connecticut for a week, do we say to them, fine, you've now spent enough time out of state that we want you to take that two-week quarantine or not? And if the decision is from the board, we're still asking you all to please make some good decisions about this, we're not, as you all mentioned, there's no policing of it, short of somebody who decides to keep posting photographs of where they are for those two weeks. No, I don't know what the board would like to do. Any change in the policy or just leave it alone?
I think we can't police it anyway. I, I, I'm inclined to leave it alone, but...
I see a little change, leave it as it is, because it all comes down to a trust, and honestly, was somebody going to come forward and tell you that they want to do that? There's no way of policing it unless we call every employee and ask them, personally, where United States this week.
Um, okay, uh, we've already dealt with Lakeside Villa with their alcohol license, Grill 58, they would like to do the same thing. Their information came in, I think it was today, um, so it's not on the agenda, we have to, so I don't know what the board would like to do about, I mean, we were talking about meeting with Dennis at some point in the next few days, whether you want me to put this on the agenda also, so that we can get it in. Otherwise, it's wait until July 14th, and I see no reason to wait that long.
I, I, I think we would be doing everybody a disservice by putting it off.
Yeah.
If we're going to meet anyway, let's get it done, I think.
I agree.
I know that she had said Wednesday, Wednesday morning. She was talking about...
Well, I know, but we may not need her here.
Okay.
I mean, and we may, you know, maybe doing, it's up to the board. I mean, if the board wants someone here personally at the meeting, Pam has said that we need to wait until at least Wednesday.
Well, if she's coming from Florida, she needs to self-quarantine for 14 days.
Right, yeah.
Well, they can Zoom it.
Yeah, so...
The interesting thing with Deb and Dave is they don't fly, they drive.
Well, still...
I, I, I understand, but they're still coming.
So I think maybe the best thing is, we, this way Dennis can Zoom in, we've done that before, where they can Zoom in, we'll just wait until Wednesday or after.
Yeah.
So, you know, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday next week, I'll get in contact with them, come back to the board, get a time and date set, or it would be one of those three days next week.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, clean up power outage, just for the board to know, we're, have one scheduled next Tuesday from four o'clock in the morning to five o'clock. The departments have been notified. It's going to also hit the town barn because Hemlock Lane's going to be shut down for the hour. I just left myself a note that I need to talk with the fire and police departments, even though they won't be directly affected, but they'll know that the buildings are not powered up at that point. Uh, changes in personnel, board a health agent. New agent will be Robert Valerie of Plymouth. He starts on July 1st of 2020. Um, in fact, did I miss? I think I missed the, um...
At the town hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you did.
Where am I?
It's like on Sunday.
31. Um, town accountant Sandra Nolan had asked that the board have, board appoint Diane Mulready-Phillips as the assistant town accountant for the period July 1st through June 30th of '23, so July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2023.
I, I, I'll move that. Sandy seemed quite pleased with her choice. All those...
Well, just a question, is she an accountant by trade, or do you guys know the background on her?
She has some accounting-type work background, but Sandy had interviewed quite a few people and thought she was the strongest candidate of everybody, so...
Okay.
I'm going with her because she's the one who's going to have to train her and work with her.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I had mentioned to the board before the meeting began, our animal control officer has given notice to our police chief, all leaving on July 7th. I'll be working with the chief to start the recruitment in Norton. The, this is an appointment that the board does. Maybe we'll do, maybe if we're lucky, we'll have, be able to set up interviews for the 14th, or maybe we'll have a specific day or whatever for the board to meet just to do the interviews.
Now, did the fox just put her over the top? I mean, because she didn't catch the fox with her head out?
We should have talked, or maybe could reach out to Brian Kling. I know he does both in the other towns.
Mm-hmm.
It might be something he might be at least interested in applying for.
Right.
I've worked with Brian, and he seems very confident.
Do we have a mutual aid animal?
Well, technically, under the police contract, all the police officers are assistant animal control officers, so... Um, then I don't, I think that Steve was in, and so he gave you updated fees for the graves showing what they are right now and what he would like them to be established.
He's connecting right now.
When was the last time he updated us?
I do not know, I'm sorry.
He did say he thought he was low on the, on the graves.
Says he's trying to bring himself in.
Into line, yeah.
Steve. Troy, Troy had a question for you. Can you unmute yourself, Steve? And he just signed off. So I guess he unmuted, but maybe we'll give him a minute.
Well, I don't know if we can hold off making a decision on this tonight, because I agree, I can know when the last time he upgraded him.
Okay. Do you want motion, do you want me to motion the table then till the next meeting?
That's up to the chair.
Yeah, I, I, I'll listen to a motion, or we, or the very next meeting.
Bring it to the meeting, to the next meeting.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I'll listen to a motion for that.
Motion, oh, now he's reconnecting.
Okay, well, let's see if he gets back on.
I'll listen to a motion to reconnect.
Reconnect. And drops.
Okay, we'll go back to the motion that was originally on the floor.
I'll make a motion to table to our next meeting.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pam, is there anything that we missed?
No.
Word?
Oh, just one thing, those bills.
Oh, good bills.
Oh, the selectmen's bills. Didn't we do that?
Pardon?
No, we, yeah, we did the selectmen's bill.
All we have is national grid.
National grid.
Oh, yeah.
Town hall electricity.
Yeah.
$1,716.59.
Yeah, I have, I seconded you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we got that.
You did.
Thank you. All right, so we're done with that portion. Are we going to go into executive session?
No reason to.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of...
Soft shoe or hard?
Uh, either one. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.